July the 20th, 2016 come to order. Does somebody move we accept the agenda as published?
So moved.
Have a motion District Three?
Agreed.
Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor of motion raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. Just to preamble, the reason, purpose of this public hearing here, by law, if the governing body is contemplating increasing your property tax, they had to have three meetings. This is meeting number one. Meeting number two will be at 6:30 this afternoon, and meeting number three will be on the 27th at 9:30 a.m. So having said that, I will, who's going to be the presenter? I'm going to recognize the, okay. This does constitute a public hearing, so when staff lays out the program head requests, without any objections, I'm going to allow each citizen up to three minutes to speak and voice their opinions on the proposal. So having said that, I yield the floor to the County Manager and the Finance Director.
Good morning, Board. I know it's been on a couple hours since we've seen each other, so glad everybody made it and bright eyed and bushy-tailed this morning. This morning, we're going to be discussing your adoption of your millage rates and the utilizations of certain accounts that we've talked about really since May. Board, I'm going to start off with the notion that in May, we made the presentation, the assumptions, based off a digest that was of current year, and in that assumptions, we made an apportionment of 75-25 where the rollback would be adjusted such that the citizens received a rollback or additional dollars back in reducing their tax bill by about $1.7 million. And that left the county retaining about $3.5, $3.6 million towards capital expenditures on it. So it does reckon Nasen it is would have been a tax increase at that point. The tax digest is much improved this year. Our property values went up substantially, and therefore, the apportionments that were associated to the fractions that I gave you in May, the 75-25, go up proportionally. And because of the deficits that we're looking at in capital, I want to still retain those two fractions to be 75-25. This will put us at a point roughly of about two, little over $2 million being returned to taxpayers and reduction of their tax bill liabilities, and for the county to retain about $4 million, which we were proposed to add to our capital schedules. Board, you know that we've had a substantial deferral of capital expenditures over a long period of time. Just last evening, you heard a proposal that we're looking at to try to give us some relief from the space overcrowding and the shortages of office space we're needing relative to the Phillips Drive building or to new construction of the building. That proposal right now, I've got modeled in, be about $8 million. The other side of that is, is initially, the general fund budget had a capitalization, capital project schedule of about $5.5 million, and we reduced it from 148 to 142. So putting those two together, I'm about $13 million that we need to add in capital on projects that is before us right now. Your next piece is that in the capital proposal that this contemplates, it leaves us about $5 million that should be available through year-end fund balance, and I'm going to propose that we use a million dollars in each district for paving projects. We know that some of our splash projects have been realigned. We know we've had shortfalls and cost overruns in splash projects. I think that would be a good relief, and certainly a necessary relief for the Board of County Commissioners to be able to have that million dollars in it. So those three things right there populate and take us, you know, over $13 million in capital work that we feel is absolutely essential in this current year. Yes, it is a tax increase. There's no doubt about it. It's marginal, but it addresses the deferrals that have been accumulating of a long period of time. If the Board will recall, in our initial budget presentation, we presented you a five-year capital plan. Each year in that five-year plan was over $20 million in deferred capital expenditures. This year was $21 million. During the review, we got it down to about 8.2 on the staff's side of the adjustment, and the Board dropped it to 5.5. So we're going to talk about the 5.5 coming back into the budget strictly for capitalization of capital projects that was staff-related, and the specialty projects that are coming in, meaning the repair or the replacement of the Phillips Drive with 30,000 square feet as opposed to 15,000 square feet, and then having a paving enhancement project across the five districts. With that, I want Mr. Letta to come up, and we're going to walk you through some of the steps that show the justification. Ms. Soro is here to talk about some of the budget adjustments on it, and I'll close this out telling you what the actual millage rate is we're recommending. You've heard the proposals, and when Mr. Letta finishes, I'll come back up and try to field some questions, and then we'll go on from there.
Before you have four schedules, I'm going to walk them through. I put numbers in the upper right corner as we go through in case we have to flip back and forth for reference. If you would follow the, what you saw back on May 2nd or May 3rd at the board meeting, at the time, our digest was 5,654, 5 billion, 5 billion 654 in '15, and it was 6 billion oh 74 in '16 at May 3rd. That presented at 13.873 taxes of 76 million last year and 81 million if that were to stay after May 3rd. 100% rollback required at that time that it be rolled back to 75 million or 12.69, and at the time of the meeting, as Mr. Bonner just mentioned, he was keeping 3.7 million of the 5 million and returning to the taxpayers the million seventy just mentioned. What that meant is that the taxpayers would have gotten a reduction in millage or would have received 25% of the millage requirement, and we would have kept 75% of the desired 1.177 for 100% rollback. So that was where we were then, and as I noted, there were going to be some changes in exemptions and so on after May 3rd, and that's what has happened. I go to Schedule Two then. In keeping with the formula, if you would, as Mr. Bonner has requested, that the May 3rd proposal, we were keeping 3.7, that's on this previous schedule here, and then we were given the 1.7 of the 5.5. Since then, the digest went from 76 to 83. At May 3rd, it was 81, so it went up about a million and a half dollars. As a result, this is now 6.9, the million four increase since May 3rd, because primarily what has happened is the estimate of exemptions came down since then, and the other was the, real property had not been fully loaded, now it's loaded, and that brings it up, as I said, to 83. That's at 6.9. Since we were at 68.1% of the total increase, using 68% again of the increase now, says you would retain 4.766. The 31.9 that we were giving back of the 5 million, 5.5, is 2.2. Bottom line is, the two of these come back to that figure. So at this point, keeping in concert with what was percentages as allocated back on May 3rd with the increase, what you now have is the digest went up, the taxes are now up to this, the rollback now is 76 million. Of the 76 million, it is a $300,000 increase, and that $300,000 increase, even if you rolled it 100% back, you would get to keep because that's for growth, the digest growth, not from increases in property values and so on, new properties and so on. Retaining the 4,766, which was on the previous schedule, and returning 2.2 to the taxpayers is the 6.9, that would require a .36 rollback from the 12, from the 13.873. It is not all the way back, obviously, to the 12.733, which means that we would be retaining 7.79 of the 1.114 that is required for 100% rollback. Little note down here, not to confuse, but I tried to make this figure tie back to the previous schedule because I had had to use an additional decimal point, comes out even, but for tax purposes, it has to be only three digits, so there's about an $1,100 difference if you were to look at the digest after running it at 13.512. So basically, at this point, you'd be retaining, as I said, the 4.766, giving back 2.2. The total there is that 6.9 increase that is now in the current final, what appears to be the final digest. I've made a note here, there obviously are appeals going on, the digest could change, but it appears the, all the other stuff is in. Rolling that forward, starting at the top, the budget you adopted is 142.5, 242 million five. 25% required for unassigned says we need to retain $35 million for unassigned at the 25%. At the end of last year's audit, FY '15, we had a $45 million unassigned fund balance. Therefore, we carry in 9.8 million. During the course of FY '16, you've done budget amendments of seven budget amendments to use this previous fund balance of 6.5 million. That would leave you 3 million and subtracting the two. You also, last year, we had assigned 4.2 million of the fund balance. We assigned it for what was then a shortfall to the budget, which you later came back with the millage increase to absorb that, and thus, that now becomes unassigned, and that increase is unassigned, so you now have 7.4 left from the FY '15 year-end. We down here, we have a 5,385 shortfall that the budget, the 142 million, is 5,385 short. If we're going to collect and keep 4,766, which was this figure right here, that means you're still going to need $618,000 of fund balance after a millage increase to the previous, 13.51. That would leave you 6,844 of the FY '15 unassigned fund balance. And again, down here, just the same numbers as before. The 15 millage is, was 13.873. If you roll back to 13.512, that's a 36.1 retention. The 114 is what takes to 100%, and therefore, you're giving back, you're keep, giving back this 31.7%, and you're keeping the 68.3. That is basically it as far as where the recommendation is at this point of the existing increase in the digest and the millage levy, taxes levied, and the retention that's being requested. Any questions?
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us the current fund balance amount, and what portion of that amount can we add to the, to the budget without impacting the 25% threshold?
As of today, today being July 19th or whatever, I've done it as of, I think, July 17th or 18th, where we are in closing, if we were to close FY '16 books today, the fund balance, total fund balance in the books right now is about, not about, but it's $63 million. And I've done a little, go ahead.
63 million. County Chairman gave us, it's 56.5 million.
Pardon me?
56.5 million.
But Commissioners, remember, your fund balance is comprised of a lot of things. Some of these are already committed, you know, you, what you're, what you're looking for is unassigned and available for expenditures and immediacy by the Board of County Commissioners. Sir?
Put this sheet up. I'm just relying upon this sheet. It says up there, it's an available fund balance above the 25%.
Which, which one are you talking about? The one I read?
I'm talking about the one that, 20, it should be about, they don't have.
Yes, it's this one right here.
He's got it?
Now, not only do you not have the assigned fund balance, this is the unassigned portion that we'd be talking about. Now, what I want you to understand is, all things that are in that unassigned parts has to do what occurred in the previous years. That means all the salaries we deferred, all the positions we didn't fund, all those things that had a dollar impact in 2015 that we tried to cut the budget on the save, populate under here. 600,000 of that alone was just one department in salaries. So I wouldn't want you to think that this is a reoccurring thing. It's not. And we've said over and over and over, sound accounting practices say, do not put your ongoing costs or pay for your ongoing costs out of fund balance. These should be for contingency dollars as well as capital-type, one-type expenditures. So in that $21 million that you see there are some of the savings we put in place this year that won't necessarily be in the budget. Again, we're going to staff these positions. You told us you wanted to.
Proposed projects?
I'm sorry?
It says proposed projects. Does that mean that it's already in the 2016, 2017 budget? Is that correct?
I can't.
That 18 million, is it already in the budget?
No, sir.
Okay, I think, I think just to answer Commissioner Holmes' question, he asked a question. How much money is, is available above the 25%?
In unassigned?
Okay, it's 21 million.
Yes.
That's right there on the page he has. So all this other stuff, this 18.5 is proposed. So that, what we're doing, we treating this as if we already spent it, and we treating it as if the Board is going to approve all this. So I'm, I'm just throwing that out just for discussion.
If I can, if I can get you to the 21, and then I'll leave it is, right here, your budget as amended, as adopted today is 142.560. The requirement of 25% is 35.6, same thing you saw on the previous schedules I handed out. We are going to have to retain 2 million, this is accounting, just trust me, it's 2 million for prepaid's and various things in the balance sheet that are required to be quote "assigned." Audit adjustments, the books are not closed. This is July 19th. We don't close officially till August 31st. There are things we've got to adjust during now and then, as always every year, and that could be another 3 million. The 600,000 that was shown in the previous schedule that would still be required to be used for fund balance, out of fund balance, keeping 4.7 and needing 5.3, says that you're going to have $5.6 million use of that, the beginning or ending, if you would, FY '16 fund balance. The fund balance, as I said, is 63 million today. If I take the 5.6 that needs to be assigned, that would reduce me to an unassigned, being the subtraction of these two figures, of 57 million. Required 35 million leaves you the 21.9. So that's how the 21 million is there. Then from there, as Mr. Bonner is saying, these are items that he is seeing that need to be spent, oh, needing to be spent or wanting to be spent over and above the 142 million dollar adopted budget.
And those, again, I've got to go back and focus, the 120, the 21 million dollars has those savings in it that would accrue if we didn't have them. So they are representing the savings from salary positions. There are other projects that roll back to fund balance because if you didn't use the money, it has to go somewhere. So it's unallocated, and it's 21 million dollars that it stands, but the first thing that comes off the top is that the capital budget we proposed that was taken out before we adopt the budget is 5.5. So that was the staff part of it. Last night, we discussed another construction project that's capital of $8 million. And then the remaining part of that is to have a paving schedule, an additional $1 million per the districts on it, which gets us down to having a $2.5 million balance above the 25% at the end of 2017. Now, all these cards have to line up just right to work, but to not address the capital and not be able to address the proportionment we're looking at takes those funding mechanisms off the project list. We are desperate for the improvements that were capitalized in the original budget. Remember, it was a 20 million, 21 million proposed capital budget. It was reduced to eight internally, and the Board reduced it further down to the 5.5. So that's coming out of the 21 right off the bat if we're going to do any capital work at all. The additional work that, I'm sorry, if the additional work, whether it's Phillips Drive or the new construction someplace else, is going to be somewhere around $8 million. I could be high on that, but I'm trying to stay conservatively high. That takes it down from the 13 million. And if we put a million dollars in each district there, that last column, that's 5 million, that puts us at 18.5, leaving a balance of 2.5 at the end of 2017. And that assumes all the staffing that was not done in 2015 current year is fully accounted for and encumbered and expensed in the salary categories we have in the, in the current year's budget. And Commissioners, you know we've got some other things that are coming on. You know we have not looked at capital planning in the way we looked at it this year historically. So now, we've got a five-year roadmap out there. This starts some of the addressing of the deferrals. It does address some of the splashed paving issues that we've got some shortfalls coming in, and it certainly addresses the critical need for office space that the Board has identified over and over again. So the recommendation is for the millage part of it, is the Board to consider a 13.512 millage rate.
Yeah, I just, I, I, last night, you know, I told you, I had, I had an issue with Phillips Drive allocating $8 million towards Phillips Drive when we have no idea what the purpose is going to be for the building. So, I mean, I, I have a problem having funds allocated to that building when there's really no immediate need for that building. So I'm just going to tell you right now, I don't agree with that, and that $8 million can go up, can go up in other, to other places.
Commissioner, the building needs, the space analysis, has been on the Commission's agenda for several years. We played the shell game last year in terms of moving, moving people around to accommodate a building that failed. We lost that 7,500 square feet. We had a deficit in office space, and so I certainly can appreciate that, as you said last night, maybe this would have been better used on paving, you know, I'm indifferent to that, but I would not want to diminish the importance of trying to provide office space that we are critically short of. I think the analysis, as we're going forward, as the judicial side of is doing this year, they're going to do a space analysis, and I think we'll be following suit with that. And I think your analysis is going to show you maybe 60,000 square feet as a ballpark estimate short, even if we build a new Phillips Drive replacement building. We have significant areas where we're crowded, we're in deficient facilities, we have some people housed in trailers right now, all these things are starting to add up to us. When we also look at the kinds of facilities we're housing the people in, it becomes to be important. Phillips Drive hardening is a 30-year solution, whether we rebuild or not. We're going to put it on standby generation. We're going to increase the fiber capability of Wendy Hill and everything this side of it. So these are long-term vision and certainly long-term capitalization on it, but to, for me to not tell you that the office space needs of Henry County is not a priority, I think I'd be remiss in my responsibility to you as a Commissioner.
Fred, question for you. With the $21 million in excess, could we roll the millage all the way back and still fund the budget at 142?
Yes, if you took the, again, excluding these proposed other additional expenditures, if the 21 million, going back to this, the requirement here of the 63, I'm taking out 5.6, 5.6, of which 600 is to fund the deficit. 4.8, I'm going to round up, was that rollback, if you would. I would have to add 4.8 to this, which would subtract 4.8 to that. You still would end up with $17 million of unassigned fund balance if you funded 100% of the budget shortfall with fund balance.
And could we fund departments that need the extra funding, such as the libraries?
Again, going back to what I said, you'd have 17 unassigned, and whatever this is or anything you're suggesting, again, would be 17 million available to spend as unassigned or keep till FY '18 or whatever you want to do with it. But as of right now, as I said, if I change this figure here from 6 to 5.4, that adds five, that adds 4.8, okay, which is 10.4. This becomes 10.4, and this becomes, instead of 21.9, becomes 17.1. I think the math's right.
Commissioner, the allocation is just my recommendation. If you were to choose to put it all in parks and recreation, you could. This is my view, and it's what I discussed with the Board of County Commissioners during the budget session. It was what was revealed in the analysis that was presented to my office regarding your capital plans from your staff. So the allocation of where you want to spend the money, as long as we don't look at using fund balance to capitalize the ongoing costs of salaries, benefits, and those kinds of things, the capitalization is appropriate, it's reasonable. Now, for the Board to agree where you want to spend your capital dollars is where you and I are having a conversation now. The Board will tell me which way to go, and this is my recommendation. I'm obligated to give you my best thinking, and this is my recommendation as to the millage and the projects on it. That the Board at any time can adjust them, and as I've committed to each one of y'all, when y'all tell me what you want to do, I'll embrace it as if it's my brand-new baby. But this is my proposal that's before you.
Do you have any more questions? Let me ask you this. There was a statement made that if we approve the tax increase, property tax increase, we're going to return back to the taxpayer 2.2 million. How, could you explain to the taxpayer how we're going to give that back to them?
The millage rate that you're proposing, it's a reduction in your tax bill, and the apportionment that we put out there contemplates.
Bill?
Yes, the amount, if, as opposed to what a full rollback would be, it's a tax increase. But if we did the full rollback, then you'd be returning all of it back as a reduction in taxes. As the motion is before you, or the proposition is before you, we're recommending a proportionment such that the county has additional capital dollars to address these deferrals that have been populating for the last 15, 20 years.
So you're recommending 13.512?
Yes, sir.
If you do 13.512, there would be, in fact, a tax increase, they would see an increase on the tax bill, even though it is a millage reduction, and we're going to convince them, we're going to convince them, we're going to give them back 2.2. So if we're going to do that, why don't we just make it 14? Say, we're going to have the millage rate at 14, we're going to roll it back and tell them we're going to give them back $3 million. That's the same principle to me.
But in this case.
That's just my opinion. They're actually going to get nothing back, but you, this false thing is, they're going to get something back, but they can't get something back that they never paid. They paid it last year, but if you roll back 100%, as a minimum, their tax bill would remain the same this year as it was last year.
I agree, Chairman, and we, no doubt, it is a tax increase, although we have minimized it to some extent to try to address these more expensive costs of these continual deferrals that are populating on us. We have over $121 million deferred capital projects that were submitted to you this year in your five-year plan. This year alone was $21 million. So the expenditures of trying to address these in the future with future dollars are a lot more expensive than trying to address them as we're going. We're taking it, I guess what I'd have to call advantage of what we think is going to be a buku year to try to address some of the deferrals. We're going to have a more robust digest, so I'm trying to use that money as wise as we can to address the capital deferrals that have populated that will cost us a lot more every year we go forward on it. And if we are at a critical mass in terms of office space, anything that happens, and Chairman, I remember the first time you tried to describe to me how we moved from Phillips and how we moved the supervisor elections and that cascade, and it was still a remarkable exercise that we could not do now. We are absolutely up against the wall if we have any other building failures, and the, some of the office space we're currently utilizing are not suitable for the kinds of work we're doing and may have compliance problems before we get to the end of the year.
Let me, let me ask you this. We went through this mathematical presentation that we have to do certain things because at the end of the year, to balance out the budget and, and all that, we have to save some for reserve to do all that. What was the, unreserved, well, what was the shown fund balance at the end of the last audit, which was June the 30th?
Unassigned fund balance?
No. Let's, let's, let's do the total.
Total was 62 million.
Okay, what was the unassigned portion of that?
45 million.
Okay, so back then, the 25, now, we're going to get, we're going to go full circle on this fund balance, and I know it's not going to change, but the deal is, I feel strong about this, that right now, if, if we could consider reducing the fund balance, and I know the Board's not going to do this, but I'm just saying this, and you, if you think it's political, it's political, you do with it what you like to. But my thoughts are, at 25% of the 142 is 35.5 million.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, if we could reduce this to 15%, which is acceptable by the same group that our finance department gets awards from, and it's, they, the finance department recognizes as being a, a source of good management, they recommend two months or 15%. Okay? Our, our cash flow in a month is about... Our, our cash flow in a month is about a little over eleven million dollars, that's twenty-two. So, if you drop the fund balance requirement down to fifteen percent, that means that the fund balance, we would retain twenty-one point three million. That also means that based on the fund, twenty-five percent and the fifteen percent, we pick up another fourteen point five million, okay? Now, I agree, this money should be used for capital improvements. It, it would be a bad thing to give a significant amount of raises to people because it would be an ongoing evolution, and then you would tax yourself to death. But capital improvements like paving, it'd be excellent for that, building a building would be excellent because it's a one-shot deal, and you would have to calculate some maintenance in there for the building and all that. So, I'm, I'm saying for me, we could put another fourteen point five in this budget and get things done, and it wouldn't be any consequences. Now, they said, well, what about the catastrophic event? God, we pay dearly for catastrophic event insurance. Okay, two months, that's, that's twenty, twenty-one, almost twenty, twenty-one, I figured it out, yeah, twenty-one point three million, okay? If, if we get to the point of where Henry County absolutely ends up tomorrow with zero money, I can't imagine us having enough money to get us for three months, what would that do? I can't imagine us, Henry County going absolutely defunct and going broke. This methodology here is, is assuming that we absolutely going to wake up one day, we have no money. So, the fund balance is going to be used to run, but that's a...
Mr. Chairman, I've got to address that straight up, you and I have been real candid about this in our collaborative budgeting process. I'm required to work within the constraints that the Board of County Commissioners have adopted.
Yeah.
The twenty-five percent was adopted by the Board.
You're right.
Therefore, I have no latitude of authority to go beyond what the Board tells me. If this Board changes their policy, I'll realign it, you know? However, right now, I've got constraints to work under, and this budget contemplates being in compliance with the direction from the Board of County Commissioners.
Well, if, if, if we fall, I yield a Florida District Five.
I'll be honest with you, Chairman, when I was initially elected, and I'm a senior member of the Board of Commissioners, you know, the property values crashed in this county. So, we were really struggling at that time, so, we did go to, we did go, go through a point where the county was almost broke, where we had to lay off a number of people. So, I'm adamant about staying at the twenty-five percent threshold. I will not, I will not support going down below that.
I appreciate that, Your Honor, but the fact is, the reason we had to lay off people because the county wanted to buy the airport, and it didn't have the funds.
I wasn't here at that time.
I understand, I'm just saying the facts.
The market's crashed.
You need to know the facts. They laid off fifty-seven people because they had to generate two-point-five million.
I don't, I don't, but they, but they didn't foresee the housing market crashing at that particular time. When they bought the airport, when they bought Nash Farms, the county was doing great, just like we're doing today, okay? Three years from now, the market crashed, and we don't have the money to sustain for three months.
I understand that.
We're going to be, we're going to be, we're going to have issues.
I understand that.
And I'm, I'm unwilling to put the county in that position.
I understand that. I'm just voicing my opinion, you voice yours, and I, I just think it, trying to convince the public that they're getting a deal, we're going to increase your property tax, and we're going to give your monies back, and it, it ain't happening. So, anyway, I yield a Florida, anybody else that'd like to speak at this time, I yield a Florida District One.
Simple question, simple answer. Last year, my house was valued at a hundred thousand dollars, and the millage was thirteen...
Eight-seven-three, thirteen point eight-seven-three.
Thirteen point eight-seven. This year, my property value was exactly the same, and we rolled the millage back to thirteen point five one-two. On the county side, the taxes, would I get a tax increase?
You will get a tax decrease, and that's one of the things I wanted to address, once you finish that, and that is, this digest is based on some people's property values going in excess of the nine million, nine percent, and some being less. I doubt anybody's went down, their values went down, but the digest in total went up nine percent. That's an average percentage increase. So, there are some people whose increase may be fifteen, and there may be some with five, some may have zero. So, to your point, those who have a zero property value increase between last year and this year, it is not a taxing, if you roll nothing back, you leave it at thirteen eight-seven-three, they will pay the same amount of taxes as they did last year, no increase. If you roll it back just a mere thirty-six-one, point three-six-one, they will get a tax decrease because the value of their house, times a lower millage, is going to have their property tax bill less than what they paid last year. Now, to the people whose tax bill is, let's say, eight percent or nine percent, and you roll back a little, they're going to see an increase. They're not going to see as big an increase if you roll something back, but they'll see an increase of eight, nine percent if you do nothing with the millage. So, it's a lot of paying, you know, it's two factors in, in paying property tax, real simple, your value and the millage. We're talking millage today, the values everybody out there in the county has their, their value. If it went up, the millage goes, doesn't go up, they're going to get a tax increase. If you roll it back, they'll get some reduction to what that increase would have been.
So, the property value increase increases the taxes on the county side?
And that's what's happened, the digest has said there are properties out there today in total of the sixty, well, it's, it's, I think that we're at nine, nine billion or something total value of property, and that in itself has gone up by the nine percent. And this, the figure that I'm showing here in the digest is at the forty percent figure, so gross that up for the other sixty, that's what the total value of the property in the county is. That's the forty percent that the taxes are assessed on. Help it in confusion.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Before we open the floor up for public comments, if you have an formal opinion, I am adamantly against any property tax increase, and the reason being, I think we can be just as physically responsible, rolling it back a hundred percent as we could increase in it, it all. So, anybody else have any comments before we open the floor up?
I've got a question.
Okay, well, you'll afford a District Three.
Lyndon, I know we talked about the Phillips Drive being eight million dollars.
On the outside, yes, sir.
And I know that we need more space, but just to do the repair on that building, what was the cost?
The estimate you saw last night is about five-point-eight, and that would give you a thirty thousand square foot, a fifteen thousand foot increase, and standby generation, and a new fiber hub for the Windy Hill complexes. So, I'm high on that because the Board wanted to see both proposals, so I used the eight because that was the new construction someplace else. If those bids come back, I needed to be conservative so that we could go on and advance the project, whichever direction the Board did. The Board has said this is a critical issue, I've taken it to the forefront, I've got it to this far, we did the architectural, we did the engineering review, we're doing the procurement aspect of it now, and we'd like to go ahead and, and forward to this. Could you take it out? Yes, but does it not address the space needs, and that'll be the end of that until the next budget cycle?
Let, let me, let me ask that question again, excuse me. We're not, I wasn't talking about the thirty thousand, I was talking about the repair of the existing building.
Okay, we have two estimates, one was engineered, one was a proposal, they come in just under five hundred thousand dollars, and that does not address the roof, that does not address standby generation, it does not address the air conditioning aspects, and the remediation factors that have to be in there. It only addresses a hundred and fifty foot of the wall that's inside the building, the wing walls are not addressed. So, that part made the unit cost per, per square foot go up. We added the additional thirty thousand as a, taking advantage of the architect's expertise. One, it does address the shortfall, we need to move some people around inside those boxes to take advantage of an additional fifteen thousand square feet. Also, when we do that repair at four hundred, at five hundred thousand, it leaves huge gaps, huge gaps in the, how long that building is going to be serviceable for. I told you, I don't want to spend a million dollars, or two million, or three million dollars on anything that's just going to be a two- or three-year program. The program we put before you is a thirty-year program, and I think the building will serve you well for thirty years under that proposal.
Let me, let me ask another question, let me ask the same question. How much is the price tag just to repair the existing building and doing the roof, air conditioning, the things that need to be done, and not adding any fifteen thousand square feet?
The first part of the repair was the five hundred, or just under five hundred thousand, either way we go, the engineered or the proposal. Then, the expenditures for the air conditioning, the transfer switch generation that should be in there, and the roofing, I, I don't recall it off the top of my head, I can have it for you this afternoon, but it was still pretty substantial. I think we were up in a neighborhood of around three and a half at that point, and that's just the fixes. It is not the thirty-year building after that. So, we've got some opportunities, and we took advantage of trying to grow it for another two, or two million dollars, thereabout. Commissioner Barham, Board, let me go back and pull those numbers together for you, but I think it was about three-point-two, it might have been a little bit more, and that was not standby generation, and that was not the fiber enhancement, it was just the repair and try to get us back in that building with some air conditioning and a roof.
Okay, thank you.
District Five, you want to be recognized?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, so, anybody got any comments or questions? Having said that, I'm on the open floor of public comments, and what I would ask that you do is, when you come to the podium, you'll be given three minutes, and just give your name, for the record, please.
Hello, gentlemen, I'm Elton Alexander with Because We Care Henry, Atlanta South, and I'm also a Stockbridge City Councilman. I came here to, today to, you have a hard job, you've seen me here before on many occasions to speak on this particular topic, and what we tend to do as, as citizens, I stood here before you many a time, and in the previous, I was with you in not rolling back because we needed improvements in services, and we needed to take the county to another level. At this point, you know, I preach every day, economic development and growth, we've seen that growth. In seeing that growth and economic development, we need to return that to the taxpayers. We've, we, we, we've seen it, it worked, the economy crashed a couple of years ago, of course, we went through a rough economic time, but times are different now. We, we, we should expect at this point to see continued growth, we see a new business open up every single day, the sales are there, all of the new businesses open up that I'm acquainted with in the South Point area, they set records for their company, and we're seeing that again with the new Polo Tropical that just opened up in that area. So, as we see that, we have a new BMW dealership that's coming to the county, we have other developments, we've seen gigabyte internet service coming to Stockbridge, we've seen major developments along that one-fifty-five corridor, we have the port dredging project that's taking place down in Savannah, we sit at the crest of Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport. I want to give out some thank yous first. First of all, we've been talking about a couple of years about giving public safety employees a raise. We have done that in this budget, and I applaud you for doing that. That's something that needed to be done, our men and women that put their lives at stake for us every single day deserve it. This, this discussion has been very enlightening in that we were actually discussing a full rollback, and myself seeing that we, we're asking for library funding. It was, it was great to see that mentioned already. That's been a hot topic of debate with us, and we need to make sure that we get these libraries up in Henry County running so that we can have access to these for our students on an ongoing basis. As the city of Stockbridge, we attempted to open our library part-time. If Clayton County can do it, if Griffin can do it, all the surrounding counties can do so, and to hear, even today, we realize that we have more revenue coming in than we realize that shall continue. We need a rollback, gentlemen, we really do. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
My name is Armenta Jones. I live in Stockbridge, I'm a senior citizen. I don't understand everything that you just went over, but what I can tell you is, I cannot afford a tax increase. I am seventy-two years old, my husband is deceased, and I've spoken to everybody in my subdivision, and some of them are here, we cannot afford a tax increase. One thing that I want to say while they were talking about some of the things, have you talked, have you looked into renting space instead of building of space? Have you thought about using volunteers in the library, such as myself, I'm a retired administrator, I know a lot of retired teachers, can we use some volunteers to help staff the libraries? Do you have to close the libraries on Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? Whose bright idea was that? Have you looked at line-by-line item, looking at everything from the bottom to the top, how we can save some money and not increase the property taxes? Everything is coming back to the property tax person. Yes, if you are working, yes, I get a pension and social security, but it takes all to live, and I don't want to get taxed out of my house, I want to live in my house as long as I am able to. Why is Stockbridge millage rate higher than McDonough? That's one of my questions I would like to put to the Board. Can somebody answer that for me?
At the end of this public hearing, I will answer that for you.
Okay, those are some...
Remind me, and I will do it.
Okay, those are some of my concerns. I'm active in the community, I want to do whatever I can, yes, I know we need roads, and I, I appreciate the roads, we need schools and whatever you do with the monies, and I know sometimes there is a need, but keep in mind that the citizens who are retired just don't get any increases, we have to live on what we get, and we need to look at, when we're giving raises, when we're doing anything, can we afford it? Go back and look, as I said, line by line, and figure out, can we do away with some waste? Watch everything. Yes, the policeman need an increase, I'm in agreement for that, but those are some of my concerns, and thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good morning, good morning. I'm Councilwoman Neet Robinson, and good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I wanted to stand on behalf of our citizens in Stockbridge in reference to the library. We had our council meeting, and there were a lot of concerns with the constituents that were there in reference to having our libraries open on the weekend, on Saturday. Stockbridge did have the discussion, trying to put, help, you know, wax the skin in the game, to try to help, but apparently, we need more help, and a lot of people kept saying that we need to come to the county. So, I'm standing before you to try to help lead me in the right direction, to try to say, where do I need to go so that way I can be that voice, to say what we can do to keep our libraries open on Saturday. The kids are going back to school, I will say, being in the education system, I do in-school suspension at a middle school, which is Austin Road Middle School, and I do know that a lot of behavior issues are coming about because our students don't have access to a lot of things. We have students that are just unfortunate, they don't have the ability to get to libraries, parents are working extremely hard, so I'm just standing before you to tell you, not what I heard, but what I know, this is definitely a need, and I'm just here to request of you all to at least say, how can we all work together? When we're talking about not different cities that we have, but we're one here in our county, and I wanted to know how we can all do this together to help our students so that way they can succeed. So, again, I'm here to ask for you to lead us all in the right direction so that way we can work together to support these scholars and get what we need for the libraries, because I don't want them to have to drive and go to other counties and get this information when we have a lot of kids in different, you know, different districts that can't afford to get out, their parents can't afford to get the transportation there. So, help me, or, or help us on the county level, because you are the leaders of the county, to tell us, for the city, what you, we can all do to work together to have this done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we save that till after the public hearing?
Sure.
The comments?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, that, that way we can give a dialogue with whomever you'd like to have a dialogue with.
Mercedes Barker, two seven five Hillview Road in Hampton. Oh, sorry about that. Mercedes Barker, two seven five Hillview Road in Hampton. I wanna say, I can sympathize with, you had spoken. I know there's a big difference in age from me to you, twenty-three years, and I can sympathize about the schools. I have four children. We're home educators, and we're a single income home. My husband equally has not seen a pay raise in thirteen years. Okay, so, we're on equal footing. I wanna show this little piece of paper. Yeah, I thought that was, thank you so much, sir, for lending me your paper. This number right here, this nine point one seven, I'm not on that scale. You know where my, how much my property value increased this year? Thirty percent. I'm on the top side. That means for every person, in order to get down to that nine point one seven, there was two people that did not have an increase in their property values in order to get it out. I'm a mathematician. I know numbers that, about that. My building value of my, of my home from last year to this year increased by twenty-five percent. Land value, forty-eight percent. If you need the landlot numbers or anything like that, I can give that to you. That would be fine. The inflationary rate in Georgia, last month it was one point one percent. In May, when I filed my letter of appeal, it was two point one percent. I'm looking at a thirty percent increase in my property taxes from over sixteen hundred last year to over twenty-four hundred this year. That's, that's unreal. That's, I don't know where, where the, the tax commissioners want us to get the money from. It's not just about the millage rate. I, I like your nice little letter that you had online. Oh, I thought it was really wonderful. It makes, makes most people feel like, you know, it's only, it's only forty dollars on a hundred and twenty thousand dollar house. I'm trying to find it here. Sorry. I have too many sheets of paper. It said here on a house that was valued at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's, the increase would only be forty dollars. That's fine if you don't change the property value. But every year, the property value changes, okay? So, for mine, it's on top of the, the change in property value, I'm looking at six hundred dollars, not forty dollars. My, my value went the, from a hundred and eighteen on my house to this year, thirty thousand dollars over that. Tell me where the money's supposed to come from. The, I, I'm confused about the budget. I look online, and they were showing that the, the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget was supposed to, okay, sorry.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to be heard at this time?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Kenneth Alderson, and I'm, I'm down the street here at Heritage Ridge. Okay, that's our subdivision. And from a common sense point of view, is basically why I came here. I haven't spoken to anyone, gentlemen, that has, has informed me that their evaluations have gone down. I'm, I'm glad to know that the, the two portions of the tax code here with our evaluations, as well as the millage, represents our, our tax burden. However, it, from a common sense point of view, it makes no sense to your constituents in whatever areas you are. This is my first meeting, and I apologize for my ignorance. However, with the, with respect to an increase in a millage, and everybody that I know of, valuations are going up. Nobody's, I mean, we're in different times now. And the economy's better, valuations have gone up for the last two to three years. We're, we're not in that recession mode anymore. Thank God. But with respect to informing your constituents and everybody out here that your millage is gonna increase as well as your valuations, gentlemen, just, it, it, we're getting hosed. And I, I don't wanna use, you know, vulgar terms or anything, but that appears to be the case. And I appreciate you gentlemen's effort to try and come to some, some normalcy as far as the increase and what you can do toward it. But I'd appreciate it if you could just do a little bit more and understand where we as, as, as citizens out here with fixed incomes, as these ladies have said here, they can't afford it, gentlemen. And, and that's reality. That's basically reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard this time? If you don't, if you're not heard this time, we're gonna have another meeting at six thirty. And then we'll have another meeting on the twenty-seventh. And I can tell you, I will not vote no for property tax on the twenty-seventh because I will not be here. If I was here, and if I could vote against property tax by proxy, I would. But I will be out of town on the twenty-seventh. But I have not voted, I know this sounds political, but I'm not seeking office, so it don't really matter, right? I've never voted for a property tax increase. But having said that, I'm gonna yield the floor to District Four. He wanted to make a-
I'll give it.
District Four is good. Anybody else like to make a comment before I address this issue with the young lady? Ma'am, if you would return to the podium here. You had asked a question as to why the millage was higher in Stockbridge than McDonough.
Yes.
I'm gonna explain this to you. I'm not gonna give you a history lesson, because I go back, I go back to the seventies. But anyway, I'm gonna give you a little history lesson. Back many, many, many years ago, the cities, not only just in Henry County, but in Georgia, the cities and the county were duplicating everything. In front of your house, you'd have a city-owned water line that you paid for. You'd also have a county water line in front of your house that you paid for, but she's only gonna get service for one. So, back in the nineties, late nineties, our General Assembly adopted, approved House Bill Forty-nine. So, what that done, it forced the, the cities and the counties to negotiate to get out of duplication of services. And that way, you only pay once for, for the service and not pay twice. So, what it was amounting to, you was paying twice for water service, but she's only getting one. So, we call it House Bill Forty-nine. So, it ended up, the four cities in Henry County had to negotiate with the county, okay? In, in order to do that, for example, Stockbridge, they don't have a police department. So, whatever function that Stockbridge has, that the county offers, then we have a formula that we take that amount of millage off of your tax, for an example. And I'm, this is gonna be a little hypothetical. For an example, the city of McDonough, they have their own fire, they have their own police department, okay? Henry County government has a police department. So consequently, if you live in the city of McDonough, you're paying for the city of McDonough, and you're also paying for the Henry County Police Department, okay? The first responder on police is gonna be the city of McDonough Police Department. So, what we've done, we've come up with, whether it's fair and equitable or not, the, the cities agreed along with the county that we would go through this formula. And it's X times P minus B times, and you put all these formulas up, and you divide it by E. Okay, what that does, it, it gives the residents of that city a credit for providing their own police service. For an example, if, if McDonough, if their funding was four million dollars for the police department, then you take that formula, and then we give you whatever it ends up. If your millage would be thirty-seven point, thirty-seven mills, and then if it comes up that you're already paying two mills, so the city of McDonough, simply because it's, they have their own police department, would only pay thirty-five mills, okay? They get the credit for that. So, McDonough, for an example, has got their own police department, their own planning zoning, which we have planning zoning, the county, they have their own fire department. So, what has happened now with, if the city of Stockbridge had a police department, we would take that same formula. And right now, we're providing all these services for McDonough, so consequently, we have to tax the people there the same as we would all the unincorporated areas, okay? In this case here, if, if McDonough of Stockbridge created a fire department, a police department, and they spent six million dollars for that, then next year, when we negotiated the S D S's, then Stockbridge would get the benefit of that investment of five million. So, instead of you paying the unincorporated millage like everybody else, for an example, if it reduced it by two mills, so instead of city residents paying thirty-seven mills, they're only paying thirty-five. So, if they had their own planning zoning, then that, that goes through the formula. So, each city is different. Hampton's different because they, they have the police department, but they don't have a fire department. And they kinda do some of the zoning, and we do some. So, the, the purpose of this is to come up with some fair and equitable formula to where, if you live in Stockbridge and, and your, your city's providing that service, you're not, you're not paying double for the same purpose, and you're only getting one. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, and one-
Yes.
One other thing, can we sign up-
Could you put that down a little bit where I can hear you?
Can we sign up for your meetings, when you're having your meetings? And can we be notified when you're having meetings on property tax increase by the mail, or?
Okay, let me, let me share this with you.
Okay.
Six thirty today. I announced this when I did it. We got a meeting at six thirty today. It's a public hearing. There'll be no action taken in this meeting. There'll be no action taken at six thirty. The board will have a meeting on the twenty-seventh. It will start at nine thirty, and then they'll get through the public hearing, and then shortly after, they will adopt the millage. So, that's the time you need to be at to meet. And unfortunately, I've, my lovely wife and I are gonna celebrate our fiftieth wedding anniversary. And we're going to take a cruise to Alaska, so, it's already been planned, so I will not be here.
But I mean, we should be notified by mail.
No, you will not be, okay.
We gotta go online and-
Okay, what we'll do, if, if you will, all this is published in the paper. The only thing is, that's not published for each meeting, is the regular meetings, okay? By law, in January, or the end of December, not only the county, but all the municipalities in, in the county have to publish all the chartered meetings.
No, I'm talking about specifically for property tax increase. Shouldn't we be notified in the mail, by the mail?
Uh, no.
Only for that?
A, a, an assessment, yes.
An assessment, okay.
Assessment, yes. Okay, if you'll notice here, several months ago, we all got one that, last year, your house was valued at fifty thousand, and now your house is valued at fifty-five thousand.
Yes.
Okay, that's, in that way, you've got forty-five days. If, like that young lady said, if you don't, if you're not agreeable that, you can appeal it. But you have forty-five days to do that. Now, as far as a tax increase, this is the purpose, this is the purpose of notifying the public that this board is contemplating a tax increase.
But how will we know if, if people didn't?
You, you have to read the paper because we, a call meeting, this is a, a call public meeting, we have to advertise it.
Yeah, but a lot of people, I read the paper, but a lot of people don't. And, you know, they don't go online. They don't know. That's why it's emptying here, I'm sure.
Yes.
But thank you anyway for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, does anybody have any comments or questions for staff? Staff have any comments related to this issue?
If, if I could just comment on one thing, the young lady that was up here at the end, and by age again, much younger than me, mentioned a six hundred dollar tax increase. I know everybody's aware of this, but I just thought to get it into the records for the public who's watching and aware of it, two-thirds of that increase is not coming to the county. One-third of that six hundred comes to the county. Two-thirds of the property taxes are, as you know, school board. And the school board has not reduced their millage. I don't know what they're doing this year, but they haven't in the past years. This county, this board, in the past number of years, has not done a hundred percent rollback, but they have chipped away and rolled back every year. And what's being proposed is a rollback of, of a proportion which would help. My point is that when you start, people look at their tax bill, and this is the only reason I'm up here, they need to take a look at what we are responsible for and what we get and what we take. We're not getting that six hundred dollars from this taxpayer and others that are above it. Yes, she has a higher value, as she said, but for your purposes and mine for working with the finances and needs to run this county and your budget, we don't have the luxury of spending that extra money. So, I just wanted to get that into the record for the public who's watching and, and looking at their tax bills.
Anybody else have any comments? Somebody move, we adjourn. Have a motion District Five, Second District Three, any further discussion? If you have a favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. We-